The West Mifflin Area School District Regular Board Meeting on Thursday, August 20th, 2020 is being-
Ben, Rees, could you, hang on, I gotta hit record. Can you start over? Hold on, give me a second to record.
Sure.
Alright, we're good.
Alright, the West Mifflin Area School District Regular Board Meeting on Thursday, August 20th, 2020 is being held virtually via Zoom, meeting to begin at 7:13. We apologize for the delay. We got hung up a little bit in our executive session. Roll call.
Ahern.
Here.
Alexandrov.
Here.
Blazevich.
Here.
Engler.
Here.
Kostonik.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Mattis.
Here.
White.
Here.
And Dezenzo.
Here.
There are no presentations this evening. Hearing of the citizens. In order to provide comment through the district website, the following must be met. Must include your name and home address in the email. Must be a West Mifflin Whittaker or Duquesne resident. Matter must have been discussed through the proper education channels. Direct email comments to the board president and/or superintendent. Mr. Esper.
We do have a number of comments this evening. The first is from Thomas A. Smolinski, Diller Avenue in West Mifflin. Number one, as of Tuesday, 8/18/20, some parents, guardians of children with IEP 504 plans were informed by Leah and other school officials that the district has no plans as to how the needs of these children will be addressed. Given that committee was created months ago to develop a school reopening and contingency plan, why was this issue not addressed in a planned place when a remote learning only model had been a very real possibility since before the committee was formed? Provide an explanation beyond a generic COVID response. Number two, are children with IEP 504 plans going to have access to services which they are legally entitled by virtue of the IEP 504s and federal state law? For example, counselor, school-related therapy, meaningful live slash real-time, not recorded, interactive instruction of sufficient length, etc. Will there be any type in any form of peer groups such as voice groups? These services are critical to those children's educational growth. When will a plan be made public so that the parents, guardians have sufficient time to review and address any issues prior to school? Anytime after August 20th is unacceptable as IEP meetings are scheduled starting 9/1/20, possibly earlier than that date. Why was a hybrid plan, part in-person, part remote, not adopted when other school districts such as TJ Still Valley, South Allegheny have adopted this model? Number four, will student instruction in general be real-time with teacher interaction in assigned class time set up like a regular school day would be or just recorded video? If there will not be real-time instruction, why not? What if any plans are in place to ensure the students are able to reach their teachers for assistance? Number five, what plans, if any, are in place if a student does not have the needed tech, equipment, and/or internet access for instruction by the first day of school? Number six, is there going to be a district-wide standard platform, Zoom, for example, for remote learning? Or will each teacher be able to choose their own? Will a secure connection be needed? Number seven, when will, when were the additional computers/technology ordered for the students?
Hold on, Mr. Esper. Mr. Souls or Mr. Solomon, is there anything? I know we'll probably touch on a lot of that as the meeting goes on as far as the structure of how the, you know, the remote learning's going to look, but I don't know if there's anything in there that maybe you guys could elaborate on. You know, if not, maybe we'll go, get to it at some point in the meeting.
And we're gonna, as we develop our plan, those are definitely aspects we're doing, taking into consideration and, and address as we do that. As right now, we don't have a concrete situation as to how that's going to be done, but that's definitely on the radar.
Yeah, thank you. Next comment is from Michelle Hickman. And she, she, she did send me her address, and I'm looking at the one that doesn't have it, but she is from West Mifflin. She writes, I have a seventh grader with a learning disability who has been in the district since K-18. She suffered academically at the beginning of the pandemic, start home school in March. I'm hoping this year, West Mifflin has had time to prepare on how to help my daughter and others like her. I would like to know what that all entails and looks like. Please and thank you, concerned parent.
Obviously, she, we can't talk about individual students. I would encourage her to reach out to the administration or Ms. Silvers. I can tell you personally, I've sat on a handful of calls with Ms. Silvers and parents this, over the last few weeks to discuss these issues, and I'm sure she would be happy to address this particular issue with this parent.
Okay, next comment is from Johanna Domek, 2513 Jefferson Avenue, West Mifflin, PA. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. As a student of West Mifflin School, I would like to thank the security guards and company for caring about the students, interacting with us, and for stopping the fights. The security guards can tell when the kid is having a bad day. I come from a family with a lot of law enforcement, police detectives, jail guards, FBI, and DIA, DEA. So when I see the school police don't interact with students, it makes me sad. Are they supposed to gain our trust? Aren't we supposed to look up to them? I honestly trust my life to the security guards before our school police, and the board promised me a better and safer school year when I spoke up last year. You lied. So if and when school goes back to normal, what changes are you going to make for a safer school year? Thank you, Johanna Domek. The next comment is from Stacy Domek, 2513 Jefferson Avenue, West Mifflin. Good evening, board. I was wondering if the state audit was completed, and if so, where can I find the findings, findings? Also, with school being remote for the first nine weeks, is there any programs or plans in place for the mental and emotional health of the children? Thank you, Stacy Domek. The state audit is not complete. This next comment is from Sarah Crook, 3406 Whittaker Street, West Mifflin, PA 15122. What type of supports will be in place for IEP specialized students now that school has made the decision to move instruction completely online? Next comment is from Diane Stenasek, 2803 Glenny Lane Extension, West Mifflin, PA 15122. She writes, please read as stated. Why didn't the district put out an all-call regarding the change of the first day of school instead of parents finding out about it on the news? Technically a violation as it was voted on in a special executive session rather than an open board meeting. This could have been taken care of at one of the special meetings in July. Number two, when were the additional laptops ordered for K through five students, and how were they paid for? Number three, how are lesson plans going to be delivered since apparently we are not to have laptops ready for the September 8th opening? Number four, mostly importantly, how are the children with special needs, have AIDS, that have AIDS, sitting with them in the classroom, going to help these children with classwork? And will there be interaction with teachers of classes or live or recorded? Number five, there should have been a better effort for the students in general. We had a task force set up, but what have they presented to the parents? Number six, who wrote the grant request under B1 Finance? Number seven, under C8, how big of an area are we talking about? Is 19,747.68, if a lot of money? Number eight, how much was the tax anticipation loan taken out for? And in closing, why are all the workshop meetings canceled as information and questions by board members should be available for taxpayers to listen to, not transparent to me and others?
We'll get to a couple of those, as well as everyone else's comments at some point throughout the meeting. A lot of these will be addressed.
Next comment is from Linda Domek, Linda Pickle Domek, 24 Sharp Avenue, West Mifflin, PA. Please do not paraphrase. Good evening, board members. When we closed New Emerson, we were supposed to have $450, we were supposed to save $450. Where did we save that money at because it has cost us more to move the children and staff to Homerville? The Plan A of the architect report. We could have redistricted like we have in the past since New Emerson, New Emerson hasn't been fully closed. And then she quotes, Emerson is being used as a training center. We can ask the state to help with the cost of repair slash remodel, and the children will have more than enough space during this time. So they don't have to learn in a dungeon, and dungeon is capitalized. West Mifflin School is starting to look like a repeat of what happened at Duquesne School District. Also, Duquesne School is holding a town hall meeting about taking the seventh and eighth grade back. How will this affect our school district in budget? Thank you, Linda Pickle Domek. And in that, Michelle Hickman's, I got the actual, she's 1735 Clark Road, West Mifflin, PA 15122. Next comment is from Kevin Squires. He's at 446 Glencoe Drive, West Mifflin, PA 15122. He writes, since June, the decision about moving schools to a remote setting for the fall is largely seen as a matter of when, if not, not if. Last week, news broke that the West Mifflin Area School District Board of Directors was delaying the start of the school year until September 8th, and that at least the first nine weeks will be entirely remote, which we are now officially voting on tonight. This may not be the most popular choice, but it is the safest, and for that reason, it is one that I fully support. It is one that each of you can make resting more soundly, knowing that you are not putting the children in our community in greater harm or risk of death. I know there will be those upset with not going back in person, but your reality is that school students went back to, should you have chosen to allow them to return in person at this point, would not be the social, engaging, and educationally rich place we all know it to be. In fact, many of the best practices and options a teacher can use for in-person instruction are now made unavailable because of social distancing and other preventative measures to better deter the spread of COVID-19. Students should not be sitting with friends at lunch, so students would not be sitting with friends at lunch. They would not be playing tag at recess or basketball in gym class. They would likely not be singing in music class or holding hands with their significant other as they walk from class to class. They would always be wearing masks and staying six feet apart from their classmates. It would not be the normalcy we also desperately wanted, want returned. That being said, I appreciate that going remote does not come without obstacles. There are new challenges to ensuring children lead, live, healthy lives, learn and have access to technology. These hardships exist for every school in the country, with 53% of students economically disadvantaged and over 25% of students in the district receiving special education. West Mifflin is faced with addressing the needs of these students now more than ever during the, during the pandemic. We ask community members, taxpayers, parents, and students are entrusted to the board of directors and administration to develop and communicate plans, ensure teachers are prepared for what comes next, and provide a quality education for all students. Make sure parents know, know what is happening. The resource families have access to and who they can contact if they have questions. Measures like the upcoming virtual town hall are great but insufficient. It is important to stay vigilant and consistently actively engage in the community on all fronts to get the best chance of succeeding this fall and into the future. Thank you for making safety a priority, Kevin Squires. And the last comment is from Teresa Sekley, 110 Main Entrance Drive, West Mifflin, PA 15122. Since remote learning has been decided, will students be required to be online during the school day, or will assignments be able to be completed when it's feasible for families that some need assistance and have parents that are working or in the day? Will special education students' IEPs be followed, as that was not the case in the past during the remote learning in the spring for a number of my child's classes? I am very grateful to the select teachers who did follow my child's IEP. In regards to social media posts regarding taxes and their, and the increase, Mr. Esper, can you explain what kind of revenue the school district receives from Kennywood, for an example, and given the email from today that all operations will cease September 7th? So no happy haunting, no fright nights, no holiday lights, no pierogi festival, we're bruising the park. I don't think the community realizes the impact our district will face, given the current situation of the pandemic and the amount of money we are losing daily. I, I will just touch on that last comment because I don't believe it'll be covered in the meeting. I think that the budget presentation in the finance meeting, which, which is recorded and is viewable on YouTube, one of those meetings, Ms. Engler asked me if, what would, what if Kennywood doesn't open? And, and I kind of, you know, I kind of laughed, and I said, let's hope, let's hope they open. We budgeted $375,000 in the past, and that was what we normally got. I took it down to 300,000. Obviously, that was enough. I don't know what we'll actually receive, but I'm guessing it will be well south of $100,000. So like I stated in, in those various meetings, any revenue estimates that I, that I made, and I think I was very clear that they were best guesses and very difficult to gauge, we will have to find other sources of income or areas that we can cut to, to try to survive. We're just, we're starting tax season, so, you know, we've, we've gotten tax revenue. Where we're, where we're gonna end up, you know, in December is anybody's guess.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Esper. Information items?
Mr. President, I would respectfully request a motion second and approval on the following items. Item 5A.
Hold, hold on one second, Mr. Esper. Are we just supposed to announce number four of the information items?
That would be Mr. Solomon, you wanted to skip everything.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Informational items, the first student day for the 2020, 2021 school year is Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. A special welcome is extended to new students and welcome back to all of our current students.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Board Secretary Business Managers Report?
Okay, item 5A, numbers one on page one. It is recommended the board approve the following guideline, and that is the administrative guidelines for transgender and gender expansive students.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Mattis.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blazevich. Any questions or comments? Alright, roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostonik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And Dezenzo.
Yes.
Item 5B Finance, numbers one through three on pages one and two.
Hey, Joe.
Yes.
Can I make a comment real quick on the last item we just voted on?
Sure.
I just want to thank everybody, you know, members, Johnny Mattis, for your leadership on the policy committee. You know, I, I motioned this, the transgender and gender expansive student policy back in February, and I just want to take a minute to thank everybody, especially members of the policy committee, members of this board who've been patient and worked through that with all of us, our solicitor, Dr. Hoover, Mr. Souls, outside consultants who helped with that as well. And I especially want to thank the GSA, the GSA members and leaders, you know, if it wasn't for them and our GSA students and their courage and, and genuine advocacy and commitment for this, I don't, I don't know that this would happen. So I think that, I just want to recognize them, and I want to recognize everybody here for seeing this through. I know it's taken a lot longer than we wanted it to, but that's what's going to help us, you know, make the right product for us and the right, the right documentation for us, the right guidelines for us. So I just wanted to thank them, and I think, you know, we don't have sports today, but if civics was a sport, I think you can say that you're a victor in this. So I just wanted to take, take a minute to, to, to recognize those folks who really helped us put these guidelines together, and I just thank you for the, the moment there, Mr. President, to, to bring that up.
Yeah, no problem. Well said, Matt. Moving on, Mr. Esper.
5B Finance, numbers one through three on pages one and two. Number one is just accepting the following grants, which we do every year. Number two, that, that's from PDE. The, number two is the grants from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency. There's two grants there. And number three is a, this is, when we make the motion to request a payment from Vettis, they send paperwork back to us that we have to agree to before they pay us, and this is just approving that agreement, so they will then send us the money. So that's something that we do every year.
Could, I, I believe there was a question or comment on, on number one, Mr. Esper, could, so, it was concerning, who filed the grant or wrote the grant? Is there, do we have-
I, I didn't write the grant, so.
Yeah, well, the, the grant there in front of you is the 2021 grant. At this point, it has not been written yet. They tell you what the money is allocated at this point, and then the grant has to be written out to succeed and fulfill all the obligations.
Okay.
We're talking about the 1920 grant, the revised one, after the Duquesne City money comes in, that was written by me. So that's the answer for that question.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Ahern.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Kostonik. Do I have any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostonik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And Dezenzo.
Yes.
Purchasing and contracting?
Yeah, item 5C, purchasing and contracting, numbers one through eight on page two. I'll just briefly describe them since we have a work session. Number one is an agreement with Page Four Learning Center. If you recall, we, we, last year, we, we paid for guaranteed 20 seats, which cost $120,000 through the efforts of Mr. Solomon and Chad Lick and, and plans of implementing our own alternative ed classroom, Jeff, would that be a right word, or, or program? We, we, we're not going to need guaranteed seats, so I sat down with Mr. Souls, Mr. Solomon, and, and I ended up calling the president of Page Four, and I said that the only way we're going to do this is if we get a per diem, a daily rate. I think we have one child that will be going there when, if we get back to regular school, and so that daily rate is 41.67. I, I don't know what it's going to save us, but I would guess it's going to be substantial. So this is a much better way to go. The next two, these are, these are technology purchases through the E-Rate program. So number two, they're, they're replacing asset access points. Number three, it's, it's a new firewall, so I believe was installed today. Number four was, is battery backups. Item number five, this is the proposal from Public Safety Security Consulting. So this year's rate will stay the same. Next year's rate will go to 18.50 an hour, and then the following two years will be at 19.50 an hour respectively, each of those years, and there, there will be a 60-day termination notice in that agreement. So given 60-day notice, either the company or we could put the company on notice, or they could put us on notice that they're severing the relationship. Number six is another technology purchase for edutyping. Number seven is, is another technology purse, purchase for the Adobe Creative Cloud K12. And number eight is, this is the flooring, this is one of the Stenasek's questions, I believe, that is replacing the flooring in the high school, main office, principals, all three principals' office, the head of secure, the police chief's office, and Mrs. Wall's office, a homeschool visitor. We are, we are working on eliminating slowly pretty much all carpeting out of the schools for, for obvious reasons.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marshall.
Second.
Second by Mr. Alexandrov. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes, to all the five.
Okay. Kostonik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And Dezenzo.
Yes.
And Mr. President, item five passed on an eight to one vote. All other items passed nine to zero.
Thank you.
Moving on, E Reports.
We're on D minutes.
Oh, sorry.
No problem.
Number D minutes on page two.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
By Mr.-
Second.
I got bombarded. I'll give, Mr. Mattis, was that you?
Sure, or you can give it to Dave if you want.
Alright, we'll give it to Mr. Marshall. Second by Mrs. White. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostonik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And Dezenzo.
Yes.
E Reports, number one through five on pages three and four.
Ooh, I have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. White.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Ahern. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostonik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And Dezenzo.
Yes.
Okay, item, item F, refunds subtracted from expenditures on page four and five, numbers one and two.
I have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Kostonik.
Second.
Second by Mrs. White. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostonik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Dezenzo.
Yes.
Okay, item G, numbers one through four on page five and six. We'll go through the invoices. We, since we did not, well, we didn't have a, we didn't have a regular meeting in June, or July, or in July, so these are the, approving the bills for our solicitor, Baldwin EMS participating in the graduation, and that was their fee. We had a legal ad in the Valley Mirror. We had a bunch of legal tax services, and then the final one is for personnel staffers, that was for the secretary that we had administered. 2A, Phase Two, Application 12, nothing under three, and bills payable to include the P cards.
Alright. All right. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Mattis.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marshall. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes, to all the two.
Kostelnik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Indesenzoe.
Yes.
Mr. President, everything passed on a nine to zero vote, with the exception of two A, which passed on an eight to one vote.
Thank you.
Moving on to H, requisitions, other items, one through, numbers one through four on page six. Number one is standard, we, we have that every month. Number two, this was not part of Precision HR's contract for covering special education substitute teachers. We, we, we have in the past increased the rates for any long-term special ed teacher who's working in the same position more than twenty days. And number three is, is the football camp to provide lunch. You know, unfortunately, the football season got pushed back to a period of time where we were not serving lunches anymore. You know, through our summer feeding program, all the other camps took place, they, they were fed through that. So this is, this is an estimate. It won't exceed, and, and talking to Mr. Stevenson, we're going to, you know, work with the boosters or whoever's going to provide that to, to do it as cheaply as possible. And then we did have three executive sessions. And I, I think, and we did have one this evening that I would like to add. If that's okay, Priscilla, I think we could do that. We weren't planning on it yesterday, but, but we did decide that we needed it today, so there was one today. And those were all just discuss personnel and legal issues.
All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Marshall.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mattis. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
No for H one, yes for two, three, and four.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostelnik.
Yes.
Marshall.
No for H one, yes for two, three, and four.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Indesenzoe.
Yes.
Mr. President, item H one passed seven to two, two, three, and four passed nine to zero.
Thank you. Thank you for your report, Mr. Esper. District Operations, Mr. Souls.
Yes, Mr. President, item six, District Operations, A through E. A is asking the board to recommend, to approve the 2021 school calendar. As we presented, the calendar is, is moving back our first school day for students to the eighth of September, which is the Tuesday after Labor Day. We'd like to utilize the first week of September, including August thirty-first through the fourth of September, as professional development for our staff members to prepare for the online learning. We did adjust the nine weeks accordingly. We kept the nine professional development days or in-service days for the teachers within the contract as well. The last day for students with moving it back will be June the eleventh, with graduation being held that day as well. Any questions to the calendar?
I, I just have a general question. Do we know if the states are still going to mandate all of the standardized testing at the same times? Because I would imagine schools are going to be on potentially different schedules.
At, at this time, the state is not giving us any direction on the state testing. There was a window they were opening up for us, I believe it was towards the end of September, for any of those spring students that could take or were eligible for that content area. But we have not got any word for the 2021 school year.
Thank you.
B is my recommendation through discussion with the administration as well. We go to first nine weeks, remote learning. We've talked with our administrative staff, as well as our union leadership here in the district. And we feel this would be not only the safest for our students, but as well as all our community members and our staff at this time. With the pandemic not seeming to come to an end, we, we, we feel only bringing kids into the school would then increase the passing off of, of the virus from one to another. With that, we were in discussions that our day will look a little different than it did last year during the spring. We're looking to have teachers come in and actually be in the school facility from eight to twelve on a daily basis. And also working two and a half hours in the evening during unconventional hours to be able to answer those questions and to work with those parents as well. A lot of questions came up, if this was synchronous or asynchronous, it could be either. Teachers will be on a certain time during that four-hour window in the AM, putting, posting their lessons and so forth, so students can watch live. And then they could also, or if the parents would like, also watch it sort of on demand during the evening hours. So, so they can keep up with that. You know, a lot, the, the, there is a lot of work that goes into building this type of plan, especially around FAP, which is Free and Appropriate Education, and those people who want to talk about the IEPs and GIEPs and 504s are probably well-versed in understanding of FAPs. And we know that the, the Fed, the federal government is not relaxing any of the regulations and so forth. So it, it will be our obligation to those students to provide them the best and the highest quality education we can give them in order to meet their needs. And, and we will put that into their IEPs as we go. And make sure those goals and, and achievement levels are in line with what we're trying to do with the remote learning. Any questions pertaining to that?
Yeah, Mr. Souls, I just wanted to make a comment on, on that in general. I understand that, you know, going full remote is, is by far the safest option. You know, and, and as an administrative team and as school directors, that's, that's always our number one obligation. However, I, you know, I believe that we could still maintain proper safety standards while bringing the kids back to school. You know, just, you know, a, a few things that I think that will really impact our community is, you know, our kids rely on that daily structure and that daily routine that, that the, the natural school setting provides. And, you know, at the end of this first nine weeks, that, that'll be almost a, a time span of eight months where they have been removed from that. And, you know, and then some of our families in, in this community do not have the means to provide an environment conducive to learning in their homes. You, you know, whether it's the parental or, or guardian structure in the home or their work schedule, they just aren't able to accommodate keeping their, their child at home and, and for the whole entire day. Our district also has a high number of special ed and special need students who cannot be properly met. It's my feeling that they can't be properly met, their needs cannot be properly met from a remote learning environment. You know, also based on the governor's and Department of Ed's designation, we're currently allowed to provide a hybrid option to our students. The state author, the state authorities are telling us that it is currently safe to open our doors to our students. You know, we have taken in every measure to protect our students' physical health. But are we paying enough attention to their mental health in, in the impacts that, you know, this is going to, this could potentially have on them long-term? You know, we presented each family, the district presented each family with three options over the summer. You know, and I believe honoring those options, I believe we should honor those options and allow the individual families to make the decisions on whether or not they feel safe or not sending their child to, into our schools. And, you know, so I'm going to, therefore, I'm going to respectfully vote no to the full remote option. And, you know, I just wanted to say that I support sending the kids back to school as soon as possible.
And I personally agree with Mr. Desenzoe. There's a lot of people or couples that struggle that have to work and with their kids going to school, that they can't be home with them during the day or they have no alternatives. Some of the children also depend on our school breakfast and school lunches for them to eat during the course of the day, too. And number three, we also still have to pay for the busing since we pay a flat rate if we use it or not. So if we're paying for the busing, I, I believe in safety for the kids, but I also believe to give the parents a choice and to open up the schools and to make a hybrid or try to make it work to accommodate everybody. So I respect the administration and the other board members. But I'm voting no to make this go remote the first nine weeks.
I think that, and I'll just chime in here. You know, we can learn a little lesson from our folks in the South and the struggles they're having with opening their doors. They're having to reverse course now, and after two weeks of being open. And, you know, what are students learning when they have to transition from in-person to online learning at the drop of a hat because somebody's sick or there's, you know, an outbreak? So, and, and what would our response be to that? And how, how would that help them be, you know, get their education? So, so I, I, I do also feel the same way. I think as, and, and I have the same opinions as some of the members here about students absolutely are missing out by not being in the buildings. But that is nobody on this call's fault. So I think that, I think that we, you know, we're going to do the best we can. I, I guess what I go back to is, I would really be, I would, I would, I don't know how I would be able to, you know, move forward with knowing if somebody in our building was gravely stricken ill by this. So, and, and I know there's a risk to all of this stuff. So I, I'm, I'm for the remote learning. And I have two children that will be remote learning, and I will have to figure it out. There, there was not, it was not well-received in the spring, I will say that. I fully have my own concerns as a parent. But, but I think this is the safest bet, where we aren't changing three weeks or four weeks into the school year because there's an outbreak. I think we'll, we'll see in a month from now that our universities around the area and other schools around the area who are opening their doors will likely be closing those doors shortly thereafter. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, I'd also like to touch on that. I agree with Mr. Desenzoe, Mr. Alexandrov. I believe that there should be an option, we had the option out there, that we can provide a hybrid learning environment where students could be able to come to school if they needed to, or remote learning from home, at the very least, without, unless they came back full-time. I just believe that, that, like, like what we were talking about before, that there's so many students in our district that need that one-to-one, in-person learning environment. I think everyone's touched on that, that they've experienced that in the spring. And to add on to what Matt said, I, I think that we need to eventually go back to some normalcy. I think this is the direction that we move back into. And if we're not going to try to do that now, I just don't see that being a possibility in the future. I think that if, if we continue to do remote learning, I could see this happening for the remainder of the school year. I, I wish that that won't happen, but just the way that everything else has been going on in society, I could see that happening. And I just, I, I, I will support whatever the admin team and, and the board goes with, but I respectfully have to disagree with the recommendation. But that is by no means how I feel about everyone on this call. I mean, it's just one simple opinion, but I think that we'll get through this and, and everyone's facing a tough decision. And like Matt said, it's none of our faults, and I don't think anyone wants to be in charge of making this decision. It's just unfortunate, and we just have to go from here and try to do our best.
Mr. Souls, are you going to continue the lunch program?
Yes, the lunch program will continue. And if I could even go back, everybody here would want to have the kids come back. It's, it's a lot better situation. But however, I mean, just watching the timeframe as all this happens over the summer and the constraints that are continually coming out and, and bogging us down. I mean, when we first talked about this and was putting a plan together, remote was somewhat, or I'm sorry, the hybrid model was feasible because if we can get kids six feet apart, they were allowed to take their mask off. Now we just get, got the dealings where they can't take them off at all now. So, yeah, you know, now we come up with, how are you going to do course? How are you going to be in band? How are you going to go into the, the, the different technology courses? Be able to be safe with, with wearing that mask and so forth. And we totally agree, we want the kids back in the house more than anybody. But the way the state is bringing down restrictions on us, it's, it's getting to the point where we can't function in, in that manner.
I, I'm sorry, Mr. Souls.
Way, and, and we're not able to accommodate these recommendations and requirements that the state keeps putting out on us.
Yeah, I, I, I just want to, I echo, I want to echo Mr. Mattis's comment about, you know, I under, I understand all that, but I don't know what's going to be different in society or in the world nine weeks from now than it is today. And, you know, I just think that we need to be prepared that this is going to be the model that we're going to be, that's going to be in place for a long time. Because not, there's not going to be anything different between now and nine weeks from now. So for us to, to think that, so what factor is going to make us determine that we could set, now send our kids back to school? So, you know, I, I, again, I agree that, you know, I'm going to support whatever this, moving forward, whatever decision is made. And, but, but there's, you know, still concerns, obviously, that we'll be facing nine weeks from now.
I'd like. Tony, can I talk?
I'd, I'd like.
I'd like to say I too have family members in the schools, and their safety is most important to me.
I, I too want to make a comment as well. I know if we would go brick and mortar, that it can, if somebody can please touch on the situation that not just our district, but other districts are going through and will be going through with subs for teachers. There is lack of, and that's for every district. That would be an issue, too.
We do, we do have a situation where the, the federal government has extended some of the FMLA language as well. And we were getting into a situation where there's childcare problems or situations that arise within the family unit. There's some teachers who also have medical conditions, that don't want to come back into the building. So through that process and bringing those students back, we could be very, very down, quite a few teachers that we cannot fulfill those positions.
Okay, thank you.
Biggest, the biggest issue we've had is the complete and total lack of leadership from the state and how stuff changed on a daily basis. A lot of the stuff that Mr. Solomon worked hard on creating a plan for us was basically tossed in the garbage can because they went from the yellow, green, red way of rating things to the low, moderate, and high-risk way of rating different counties. And it just seems like the whole process is unfair. You can have twenty thousand people going to Carlisle for a car cruise, but you can't have more than twenty-five people inside a building. And, and I think that this is, I don't want this, but I have to support Mr. Souls on this because unfortunately, it's the right vote based on the lack of leadership and the, the so much conflicting information we get from the state. The Secretary of Education quit halfway through this. And personally, my wife and I, I were more than comfortable to send our son to school for, you know, this fall, we trust Mrs. Haney and her entire staff and our administration as well. And unfortunately, this lack of leadership and overreaction and underreaction from the state is horrific.
I think it underscores how much we don't know. And I think that we, we know we can push through this first nine weeks and see what's different as time passes. I agree with you, Tony. If we go this route, is it for the rest of the, of the year? We, I don't, nobody can answer that, right? But it's, 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 it's just something that, you know, based on a pure safety decision that But it's, 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 it's just something that, you know, based on a pure safety decision that we, I think we we need to 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 think about and and do. And if the administration's recommending it, I think that's, that's, that's what, you know, we need them to be the experts for us to tell us what they think is the right thing to do. And and I think you know, that's why I would be supporting it.
Does anybody else have any other comments on on that particular motion? All right, go ahead, Mr. Souls, you can move on.
Okay, items C, we'd like the board to approve our athletic physician and school physician for the 2021 school year at a flat fee of $20,000. We also like to ask the board to approve our school dentist for the 2021 school year. And that is a rate of $5 per examination. Then we're also asked the board to approve our two school psychologists contract. And their rate is $75 an hour. And it is not to exceed 1,200 total hours or $90,000 for the 2021 school year. And that's all under District Operations, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Souls. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Alexandrov.
I have a question.
Uh, we'll get to that in a second, Mrs.
Okay. Second.
Second by Mr. Blazevich. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, on the contracted school psychologists, did we expend that entire last school year? Or how much did we expend?
We, we did not. And and I think that that was a as a result of COVID and us shutting the schools down. This she had requested, this was requested last year because of the increase in number of of children that need to be tested.
Yeah, I know why.
Okay, well, it it, no, we did not because we were, you know, we shut the doors on March 13th. And I think if if we would have stayed open, we would have got close to that number. I don't know if we would have exceeded it. I mean, I don't know if we would have hit it, but that's a not to exceed number that that we will be approving.
Do you know what we did spend?
It was 16. It was in the 60s for all three years. I had that written down and I don't know where it ended up.
Okay.
I did.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I I just had a comment too, real quick, I think, before we vote. I there was a, there were comments in in the earlier part of the meeting around technology and student laptops and things like that. And I don't know if we were going to get to those later or not, but I just wanted to make sure that folks knew that we are have ordered laptops and we believe we can cover fourth, fifth and grades on up and that we are putting a plan together to cover the remaining elementary grades. So, you know, Stephen Ford has done a great job on putting all of that together. There's a demand, every school in the whole United States right now is buying laptops for this particular case. So it's a supply chain issue as far as the order is in. And I and and we're waiting on Dell to get back to us. I think they estimated October as a delivery date. But sometimes they come in early, but it's a supply and demand issue with that right now. And I believe we put the order in and it was, it was as soon as the CARES Act money came in, I think it was June or very early July. So 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 with that coming, you know, we're not looking to not provide technology. We're efforting that significantly. So so I don't want to think, I hate for folks to think that we're going online and we're not having an online plan. We have an online plan for technology. It's just a supply chain issue for right now.
All right, thank you.
And I think, I think that folks should also know that I know when I I got on the board, when we did this initial ordering of computers for six through 12, I specifically asked the person who prior ran that department, why aren't we getting them K through five? And they were, they told us we didn't need to get them. And now unfortunately, we were caught in this and it's going to be corrected as quickly as possible, but sometimes new leadership shows you the better way to do things. And the world that we live in, there's probably first graders that are way better with a computer than I am. I look forward to them getting them as soon as possible.
That's right, Dave. And and we're doing an inventory of carts and things in the buildings right now. So Stephen's getting creative with, you know, what do we have that maybe we traditionally wouldn't give as a one-to-one computer? Even if it's a nine-week temporary basis to be able to give. And I think also we're going to be, you know, asking who can bring their own computer so that we could you know, move a computer that would have been given to a student to somebody else who actually needs it. Because if somebody can bring their own personal device and it's usable, that might be a solution as well to be able to trickle down computers to the younger students. So that's also being discussed.
All right, anybody else? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
No on 6A and 6B. Yes, on C, D and E.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostonik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes to A, C, D and E. No to B.
White.
Yes.
And De Senzo.
No to 6B. Yes to everything else.
All right, Mr. President, item 6B passed on a six to three vote. 6A passed on an eight to one. D, C and E, or C, D and E passed nine to zero.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Yes, Mr. President, under seven superintendent's report, we have A through C. A is asking the board to approve the settlement amount for a due process complaint and settlement under the activities, student activities. We have nothing this month. Under C, buildings and grounds. It is recommended below the facility request or building permits as presented.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Mattis, second by Mrs. Kostonik. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostonik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
De Senzo.
Yes. Board president's correspondence, there is none at this time. Professional personnel? Mr. Souls?
All right, under number nine, professional personnel, we have A through E. A is the leave of absence. We have six professional staff members requesting some type of leave, either FMLA, sabbatical as presented. Under B, we have no resignations. C, no retirements. D, no hirings. And under E, it is recommended the board approve the following teachers to be paid at the following step and scale. Having provided their documentation, moving from once, one column to the next in the pay scale.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Ahern.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Engler. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostonik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And De Senzo.
Yes. Non-certified personnel?
We have A through E, under number 10, non-certified personnel. Under A, we have employee requesting a FMLA beginning August 6th. An additional date to be determined. Under B, we have resignation of
Mr. Souls, Mr. Souls, we're we're gonna, I'm gonna request that we pull number B from the agenda.
Very good. We got Mrs. Damasio, do we have to do a motion to amend?
We can do a motion to amend to remove it. That's not a violation because we're removing it even though it was posted. But we can remove.
Okay.
So you need a motion to amend the agenda to remove B.
I would like a motion to amend the agenda to remove item B.
Motion by Mr. Marshall, second. Second by Mr. Mattis. Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostonik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
De Senzo.
Yes.
All right, B will now be removed from the agenda. And lastly, on page nine, we have the hiring and transfer. James Doan, head custodian on the variable shifts at the high school has moved to the head custodian on the seven to three shift to Clara Barton. That'll be effective August 24th.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Ahern, second by Mrs. White. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostonik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And De Senzo.
Yes.
Mr. President, A, C, D and E passed nine to zero.
Thank you. Athletic personnel?
We have A through D, Mr. President, we have nothing under leaves of absence. Under B, we have two resignations and assistant football coach and employee 3458. We are being asking the board to approve the resignation or termination. Hiring, under C, recommend the board approve assistant volleyball coach effective August 21st, 2020. And under D, other, we have nothing, sir.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Mattis, second by Mrs. White. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostonik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And De Senzo.
Yes. Substitutes, there are none. I don't, yeah, there are none. Conferences, there are none. So that takes us, I think you're done, Mr. Souls.
All right, thank you.
Congratulations. You made it through your first, first, first one.
Working and serving the district.
It's not over yet. Yeah. Hey, it it's early, it's early. Executive session discussion, we discussed personnel, board reports. Does anybody have any committee reports?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch on policy. I think Matt covered it earlier. I just want to thank everyone that was involved in the new transgender guideline that that went through the district. I just wanted to get in touch with Mr. Souls, make sure that I know that we have some some other issues right now with going remote and and not being in the building as a whole, but making sure that all of our teachers, staff, faculty, admin, students, everyone top to bottom of the district is trained and educated on this guideline. Making sure that we can work that out and find time if you can get with GSA. Mr. Solomon's worked with them through this whole process. They're great. They'll be able to handle and take care of everything, all of our questions that we'll have to ask. But once again, just wanted to thank everyone for the support and patience with this. And this is only the beginning. We have a lot more to to get done with that, but good to, good to see some positive things coming out of this.
Hey, and John, I think you you've showed an amazing amount of leadership since you've been on the board. I forget that you're young enough to be my son, but I think it reflects well on you, just the fact that you're an officer at Homeville. And and just how much you care about the community and the district. You know, you're on the younger end. You you've shown a great amount of leadership. I love working with you because you're just a good person.
Thanks, Dave. You're not that old.
Yeah, I am.
Any other committees?
Yes, I have a couple. Buildings and grounds, I talked with Richard from ABM last week. They're moving forward up to high school with the work they've been doing with that beam and the chillers. Homeville's been progressing really good. They got everything in. They're testing the equipment and running it. The same with Clara Barton. Everything's going good, no problems. Still Center, we had a meeting on the 11th last week on last Tuesday. Basically gonna do a hybrid, a remote, and some people work from home, just trying to adjust with everything down there. Athletics, I was asked from the Hall of Fame Committee to announce the people that'll be inducted this fall. There's a list of 10 inductees. Darren Duda, class of 1987, football, track and field. Joe Esper Senior, coach and contributor. Chris Charles, class of 2007, basketball. Jasmine Hayes, class of 2009, basketball, track and field. Michael Jacobovic, administrator, coach and contributor. Luke Lapel, class of 2002, football, track and field. Jennifer Miller, class of 1997, softball. Sam Sherlock, class of 2010, wrestling. Eric Traj, class of 1985, basketball, football, track and field. In the 1966 West Smithland South Spartan football team that was undefeated through Ned Murvis. There was an honorable mention of Tony De Senzo in basketball, but he didn't have enough of votes. So he didn't make it this year, but hopefully sometime in the future. But that's
Voting requirement, one.
So all you needed was one. Okay.
I'd like to add that not only is Darren Duda an outstanding athlete, he went and graduated from Harvard.
I think we have two Harvard grads on there, Miss Ahern. I believe Luke Lipai went to Harvard as well.
I I think he did too. I didn't catch his name, though.
Yeah.
It's great to
We're not certain on how, you know, the the ceremony or the induction is going to look this year with all the circumstances that, you know, are currently going on. But, you know, we still felt the need to announce a class and and move forward with the tradition. So you know, we'll we'll continue to plan as time goes on and see, see how and if and when we could fit it in this year. If not, then we will, you know, definitely recognize these people publicly. You know, if it can't happen this year, then then definitely at the next ceremony, they'll be asked to come back.
It's great to see Mike Jacobovic, or most people called him Jake, who was also a former school board member, longtime athletic director and just a great person. And it's nice to see Sam Sherlock in his first year of eligibility as our only wrestling state champion on there as well. And I mean, it's just a great group of people that represented West Smithland very well.
All right.
I have a question for you. Do you know how they're going to get their hours for certification, like for cosmetology and others?
We're working on it right now with different things. There's a lot. They left it more or less up to each school district to set up what their policies were, but they're trying to work around with the kids to try to give them some hands-on, some theory. It's just, you know, with 10 or 12 different school districts, you know, we can't supersede at Still Center over everybody else.
No, I was just curious about the practical, like for cosmetology, how, you know, they they require a number of hours.
But it's, it's like I say, there's a lot of balls up in the air right now. You know, they think we couldn't come in and say we're actually open and never all of the other schools might go remote or might go out because they would supersede us at Still Center.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any committee reports?
I could cover, I think I talked a little bit about the technology. I think there'll be more information coming out about laptop pickups, which should be starting here. I think next week. But I know there'll be more information coming out about that. I wanted to ask, there was a mention of of a town hall. Do we have more information on that?
Not as of yet. We're going to put our plan together, then hopefully by early next week, mid next week, we'll be able to have that meeting.
And that'll be, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Matt. No, I was just gonna ask if, can we do an all call after after this meeting or tomorrow to try to just get the information out to the parents?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'm just being corrected. We ordered our our technology for the fall in June 12th is when we put the order in. So that can demonstrate the backorder and the supply chain issues if they're, they moved from September to October. So that can demonstrate the back order and the supply chain issues if they're, it moved from September to October, I think a few weeks ago. Um, as far as the, the receive date on that order from June 12th.
Okay, does anybody have anything else? All right, uh, solicitors report?
Our report was given in executive session. Thank you, Mr. Sen.
Thank you. Uh, old business? New business? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by everyone. Second, second. All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night.